Uh, let's get, and I want to get, uh, before, you ready? All right. Now, we might need a couple group guys there.
All gay on television. Keeping my way up, he gave all those, all the newspaper, the name, everything, all the people, keeping people away.
Uh, we've already saluted the flag, um, so we're gonna have the clerk call the roll first. Counselor Capone.
Yep.
Counselor Delasola.
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Here.
Counselor DePiero.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Counselor Marchese.
Here.
Counselor Matusky.
Yeah.
Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Present.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yeah.
President Napolitano.
Here.
Eleven members present, Mr. President. Okay, well, the, with the, uh, the, uh, saluting the flag, as we've already done that in our special meeting, uh, we have a, uh, public hearing scheduled, which is scheduled to start at seven o'clock. Clerk will read item number ten. Item number ten is an order for a public hearing to amend the City of Everett Administrative Code.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second motion.
Second.
We have a motion to open the public hearing. Second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Okay, uh, I'm gonna ask three times, uh, if you're in favor of, uh, the item, uh, to amend the, uh, City of Everett Administrative Code. Uh, anyone in the pub, in the, uh, in the audience in favor of item number ten? Anyone in favor of item number ten? Third time, anyone in favor of item number thr- ten? Close that section of the public hearing. Then ask three times, anyone opposed? Um, is there anyone opposed of the amendment to the Administrative Code? Is there anyone opposed to the Administr- the, uh, amendment to the Administrative Code? On a third time, is there anyone opposed to the, uh, change in the Administrative Code? Hearing no opposition, I'm closing that segment of the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearings.
Have a motion to close the public hearing, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Okay.
Make a motion to open public participation.
Nope, we have, we have, this is, this item is still before you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Favorable action.
Have a motion for favorable action. Counselor McL- uh, McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, I will be voting no on this Administrative Code, for one reason and one reason only. I believe that all of our other standing committees, uh, serve, members serve for one year. This calls for our School Finance Commission to serve for two consecutive years, and I believe that it should be the due responsibility of each council president to be able to appoint their membership to the committee yearly. So I will be voting no this evening, because I don't believe this follows protocol by having all other standing committees serving one consecutive year, not two. Thank you.
We have a pa- motion for favorable action, second. Counselor Hanlon?
It was, it was not.
Administrative Code cannot go to committee, it cannot be amended by the City Council, only the mayor can, can amend it. This was held over from our last meeting to, to schedule the public hearing for this, for today.
Yes.
Please turn your note.
No, that was not for the admin code, um, uh, counselor, that was for the City Council Legislative Code. This is for the mayor's administrative code, different code. Nope, uh, because we can't amend it by, by, um, statute, okay?
Okay, we have a motion for favorable action.
Can we have the, Mr. President? Can we have?
Counselor McLaughlin, your second time up, go ahead.
I apologize, could we just have it explained briefly to us of what the changes are in the Administrative Code? Some of the councils may not necessarily know all of the items, in a brief description of them.
For me? Okay. Um, so, th- this was written by, uh, the city solicitor, I believe she's in the building, maybe in the audience, ah, there's Colleen Mahia right there, so she could probably, uh, explain it more in depth than me, but I'm, I'm gonna give you a little brief synopsis, and then, uh, if I need some help, I might call her up. Motion of the city solicitor come before us. A motion to have the city solicitor come up second, all in favor. Opposed, the ayes have it.
Make a motion that we also invite up Mr. Kevin O'Donnell, Mayor's Chief of Staff.
Second. All in favor. Opposed, the ayes have it. For the record, please state your names.
Good evening, Colleen Mahia, City Solicitor.
Uh, Kevin O'Donnell, Chief of Staff, and Mayor Di Maria.
Yeah, I turned it off. Uh, so, um, some of the things are just kind of, um, just clarifications to the Administr- I can go one by one if you want, I don't know how you wanna do it.
If you could give us, how many, how many amendments are there?
Um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen.
If you can give us a brief synopsis, if you could.
Like I said, some of them are just, um, clarifications, um, there, there's a, one of the main ones is, um, the addition of a parks commission, um, so we can, so the city can have a commission overseeing usage of, of parks in the city, uh, we don't have that. We have a DPW commission who oversees the water sewer and cemetery, um, they also get a stipend, but under this, under mass general laws, a parks commission cannot, uh, receive a stipend, so we thought it best to create a new commission. Um, and the other main amendment is, um, the establishment of the Elections Commission, which wasn't, um, presented when, um, the former clerk established the, recommended to establish the Elections Commission, so just, that just added to the admin code. And then, um, a couple of changes to the existing School Finance Review Committee, adding, um, the President of the Everett Teachers Association as a member, and the, um, City's Director of Organization and Assessment. And the rest, like I said, are just clarifications, I don't know if you want me to go through them or not.
What, Counselor Marchese.
A quick, just a couple of questions on the four. Parks Commission, what would the stipend be?
There is no, they cannot get a stipend.
They cannot get something, yes, you gotta create a parks commission, that'll be okay.
Election Commission, that was the one we added, the, uh, uh- Yep.
-city clerk to it.
Yes, but it was just never added to the admin code, so it's just-
School Finance Committee, that's the committee that, that's part of council.
It's an, it's an executive, um, committee-
It's an executive, yep.
But under the ordinance and under the admin code, um, there are members of the school committee and the City Council as-
As one, yep.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a legislative committee.
No.
Um, it's, it's u- under the executive, but there are members of all bo- uh, the City Councils.
And so, they're mostly appointed by, our president being appointed by the president also.
Yes.
Can that be changed, that's, I think, uh, if there's a different president in the council for the following year? Or you wanna give a two-year?
Um, it's a two, e- even under the original, the way it was originally written, and I think it was former Alderman Chuck DePerry who, who created it, I, I believe, um, it was always a two-year term for the school committee and the, um, and the City Council.
And that would be on the election year, they'd be selected on the election year, obviously.
And I think it's a little different, because it's not a legislative, a, a committee, you know, formed only solely under the City Council, I think that's why the term is different.
All right, thank you, so more or less, this is what this whole thing consists of.
Yeah, and then there are other, like, like I said, clarifications.
Can you give me two more, and I'll be happy.
Sure, um, we added some language for the plumbing, um, the plumbing inspector and the electrical inspector, um, requiring them to hold all licenses and certifications under mass general laws. Um, let me see what else, um, uh, I don't, I mean, I'll have to look at the admin code for-
I'm, I'm, I'm satisfied what you have there, it seems like there are a lot of basic, uh, things that you had, that make too much sense. Uh, thank you.
Counselor Capone. Thank you, Mr. President, through you two, I invited guests. Who oversees the parks now?
The DPW Director.
Okay, so it falls into, uh, his watch. And with the Parks Commission, there'd be no stipend, but would there be an additional cost?
No, because it actually can be made up of employees, too, so it can be an additional, um-
So it could be existing employees, there would be no additional cost to the city?
Cannot do it.
And is that the way we're looking to do it, with existing staff, or are we looking to appoint someone? It's an option.
Yeah, it's an, I don't, the mayor hasn't, um, made that final decision.
The only, only question I have on that is, why would someone wanna be the park commissioner if they're not compensated? Why would they wanna take on that role? Well, so we counsel out of the goodness of their heart and the passion for the city. God bless volunteerism.
Just like the, just like the library trustees did for years.
Okay, and other than the ones that you've raised, uh, I, I got the information about the two-year appointment that one of my colleagues was concerned about, are there any other ones that are there that cause any concern, anything that's significant?
No, um-
Okay, thank you, I don't have the questions. We have a motion before us for favorable action.
Excuse with the customary thanks.
Second, if we could excuse with the customary thanks, I'll make- Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Favorable action.
Second.
Clerk will read the roll.
Excuse me, Counselor Capone.
No.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
No.
Counselor McLaughlin.
No.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
That would be nine ayes, two nays, Mr. President.
You have passed item number ten. Mr. Chairman, uh- Counselor Simonelli through, um, his interpreter.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you for Counselor Simonelli. I wanna make a disstatement on behalf of Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. President, um, it may or may not be known to the homeowners of Everett, or the citizens, or the people in the audience, that Counselor Simonelli has lost his tongue, he doesn't have the ability to speak, and I'm here as his interpreter, so I'm gonna read a statement on his behalf. First of all, I wanna apologize if I offended anyone with my comment on social media. It is not my character to hurt, harm, or upset anyone. I was expressing an opinion on Facebook posts, something I now regret. However, I never said, nor would I ever say, anything racist, bigoted, or hateful, I was simply commenting on a post. My comments were not racist, it was not an attack on me. In the work I have done for our community, it is my intent only to serve my community, a city I serve with pride. For generations, my family, who immigrated here, has been a part of this community, helping neighbors and citizens alike, that is something I will still strive to do daily. I am proud of my immigrant roots, I am proud of the immigrant roots of our city, and I will continue to support them in any way that I can. Thank you very much, Counselor Simonelli.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to open public participation. Okay, before we, uh, I wanna read the ground rules for public participation, I've read this before, so this is nothing new or created, uh, recently. Purpose of public participation is to allow Everett residents, tax, excuse me, please, one meeting. Purpose of public participation is to allow Everett residents, taxpayers, and business owners an opportunity to bring issues and concerns before the City Council. Each participant will be allowed a limited amount of time to voice their concerns. Members of the City Council are not allowed to ask questions or comment on these issues or concerns. For that reason, public participation is not a forum to address issues regarding specific members of the City Council. Because they're not allowed to respond, identifying individual members by name and their ward is not allowed in our rules. If the participant wishes to be contacted regarding their issue, a council will be assigned by the council president to follow up with you via telephone, provide the number that you provided on the sign-in sheet. If I can, have a motion to open public participation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, do we have any sign-ins, for, sign-ins for the public participation?
At seven o'clock, there was nothing, Mr. President.
At seven o'clock, there was no sign-in on public participation.
Okay.
Point of clarification, Mr. President.
One, one moment, please. Yeah, all right, I'm gonna open up public participation to anyone who's not signed, our rules do require you to sign in, though, uh, so, so I wanna come up, now, public participation is only open for ten minutes, so, we're gonna have two minutes per speaker, and at the end of ten minutes, please have a seat, and state your name and your address, please.
My name is Gival Mesedat, I went Gival Mesedat, nineteen thirty-five, Vey Beach Parkway, I've been passed off, uh, one of the Haitian church in the community, where the members of my church came to me on Sunday, yesterday, and then inquiring about what the councilor had said, to, you know, basically like what he has responded to a post on Facebook. We are living right now in the social media period, I do understand this, the councilman has some issues about like his, the way his tongue, the way he can't, he can't speak, I understand that, but he can write, that's when he still have his, you know, taking what he can say. By, it, by saying something about us, the Haitian community, by saying like, we, you know, we should be happy that we have access here, we have work here, we should be happy, and then that's very racist, it feel like we're living in the area of where even our president is being racist to us, we don't expect that to be in our own community, where our kids go to school, our church are being here, we being paying taxes, everything, and then we paying the councilor, too. We expect him not only like to apologize, not just like saying whatever he said like through his spoke, spokesperson, we will want him to, we want to see him, we say, sit, because you have no confidence in him saving us.
Sir, if you would allow the other gentleman, he has been actually stopped twice to come up, and if you could go after him, that would appreciate that, thank you.
Sorry, I thought I signed the wrong sheet.
Not a problem.
I'm Charles DePerry, you all know me, I'm from sixty-six Main Street in Everett, and I just wanna bring up the, uh, the big dig across from our building, everybody sees it when they go to work, it's right near the Rotary, it's Antilles Circle. I know it's been brought up, I've spoke to a couple of the councilmen, and they responded, I thought there was gonna be something said about it tonight, I don't know if there's a meeting about it tonight, but I'd like to know how long it's gonna be, when it's gonna end, are they gonna clean up the mess? It's nothing but a big mud pit. I'd really like to know when they're gonna clean it up, and who is gonna clean it up? I believe it's National Grid, and maybe when they do clean it up, maybe, uh, the First Lady of Everett could sit down, we, we could talk about some of the things we can do there. Thank you for your time, everybody.
You state your name for the record.
Good evening, I'm Edwin Argueta, um, constituent, one fifty Jefferson Ave, uh, here in Everett. I wasn't planning to speak, but I felt compelled first to say that I stand in solidarity with our brothers and sisters from the Haitian community, and also to say that, you know, the comments that have been made with respect to some members of the immigrant community, which by the way, is one of the most diverse communities across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, are not, uh, uh, they're intolerable, uh, and we shouldn't be having that kinda conversation, this is not the first time that has happened. We heard, quote, the comment in, uh, in our, uh, conversation about DPS and DACA, that Everett should be kept Everett. We can go back to that, um, public hearing and review the tape, um, and we, on behalf of forty percent of this community, you know, ask this body to at the very least sanction those that promote that kinda behavior, that kinda language. We make a lot of contributions in our city, and we're not gonna stand for any of that. So I respectfully request this body to take, to consider some actions, because we believe that those that promote that language, that behavior, uh, are promoting, you know, the political environment that we're living at right now nationally. In fact, I personally believe that those that use that language and that behavior are the enemies of diversity and progress, which actually, we have contributed to. So, thank you, uh, and I hope that you take some action.
Hi, this is Jean McAdam, I'm from, from a very large family in Everett, I grew up in Everett, I live at thirty Francis Street, this is a little unexpected, but, um, I'd just like to say that, you know, I'm from a first-generation Irish Catholic family, and, um, I know a lot about history, and the history of the way immigrants were, um, treated in this country, especially the Irish, and the Irish could not get jobs, the Irish women were, um, kept as indentured servants, basically, and, you know, I'm very disturbed about things that I've heard that's been going on in this community. I'm disgusted by it, and, um, frustrated. You know, I left Everett probably when I was like twenty, and I was gone for twenty, uh, thirty-five years, and, um, I came back ten years ago, and I'm asking, please don't do the math, but, um, you know, when I moved back ten years ago, I really had no connection to Everett. You know, my friends are in Boston, I would always go to Boston, but because of the recent things that have been going on in Everett, I plan to get more involved, and I stand with the Haitian community, or anybody else that has disparaging remarks said against them, and, um, I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Nadia Briosch, and I live in thirty-six Dartmouth Street in Walden. I'm actually here today because I was extremely disturbed by the comments that I, um, heard from the councilman. I've worked at the Whittier, the Carverian, the Madeleine English, and I've worked with children with learning disabilities, um, mental health issues, or any type of issues that were getting in the way of their learning abilities. Um, as a man that holds a position of leadership and an example to the children of this community, it was extremely disturbing to hear those statements. I know that he said it wasn't a racist comment, but I just wanna put the reminder that he said a nasty Haitian woman, not just a, not just a nasty woman, but a nasty Haitian woman.
Counselor Simonelli, if you would.
Okay.
I, we, just for the record, we've read the posts.
Okay.
The posts was brought, were by the person, that you were responding to, were by the person who created the post, not the response that the councilman had indicated.
So that wasn't the comment that he stated initially?
No, no, that is not.
Neither the hashtag tempted to get out the car and kill someone?
He responded to it, he didn't state that.
Okay, well, that's unfortunate that he agreed to the statement in any fashion, um, if anything, I would've been more comfortable, especially as a leader to the children in the community, for all the progression that we have made in the past couple of years, that he should've shut that comment down and totally disregarded it, and then instead made an example as to what something would've been better to respond to road rage, because road rage is another issue that we're having in the city of Boston with all the traffic that's coming. So there's just a lot of different things as a leader that was extremely disappointing, and as we would do with children, they, they have to pay consequences for their actions, and usually when a person pays consequences for their actions, it sends a message to those around them. So I'd, I'd really be appreciative if there was some consequences for the councilman, um, I'm pretty sure that my people would really appreciate that he resign or be fired, but whatever consequences would be had would be much appreciated, thank you.
Sir, sir, this gentleman is actually, is next, then yourself, please, and then these are the last two speakers, we're actually out of time, I'll allow these last two speakers, and then we need to con- continue to conduct the business of the city. Sir, if you'd state your name and address, please?
Um, good evening, David Lindsay, Twelve Valley Street, Everett, Massachusetts. Um, I'm gonna be very brief, uh, but I did just want to point out that we live in the greatest, if not one of the greatest countries in the world, and it's, it's very troubling to see that we still live in a time where we're confronted with the possibility that people don't understand what it means to be an American. As Americans, as a citizen of this country, we have to understand and be cognizant of the fact that this country was established on the notion that people could come to this country and find a better opportunity, that they can come to this country and be able to strive for the American dream, and no matter how you got here, or when your ancestors came, or how they came, if you are a citizen, you have every right, you pay your taxes, and I feel that it is imperative that we treat every citizen with the o- utmost respect and give them the dignity that they deserve. As elected officials, it's your duty to ensure that this city is, um, not just a, a model city for, for just everybody, a model city for the state, because the state is watching. Now, a lot of people are scared of the word diversity, but the truth of the matter is, it's coming, it's here. When the initial immigrants came, when the initial immigrants came, uh, being from, uh, European countries, they said disparaging and hateful things about them as well, and it's- them as well. And it's amazing to me how we have amnesia when that history is not really that far away. We need to ensure that we all, as active citizens and participants, not only in this country, but in the city, we treat each other with dignity and respect. We treat each other like we're human beings. A lot of people saying, do things in public that they don't say and do in private. We need to start having integrity. We need to start walking in the way that we talk. We have a responsibility to each other to uphold not only this country, but this city. And you all should be the pace setters. Now, I'm not going to talk about the situation, but I know that from this day forth, there shouldn't be any situations like this again. You have a duty and a responsibility, not only to yourselves, but your constituents. Because at the end of the day, everyone knows, especially when it's election time, that every vote counts, whether you believe they're going to come out or not. And it is my hope that more people come out in a unified fashion, more than ever, from this day forth, to vote, but not only vote, hold everyone accountable. Because if there's no accountability moving forward, we have more problems than we can see that we can address tonight. So I hope that we can treat people with dignity. I'm sorry, sir, and I'm going to finish, Mr. President. We need to start treating each other with more dignity, and we need to start holding people accountable. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hello, folks. My name is Scott Davis. I happen to be brother of John Noonan, who made that post. And when he said nasty Haitian women, he could have meant nasty Irish or Italian women. That's all he meant. He didn't mean it as racist. But...
Let us the audience to show the same respect to this speaker as any other speaker that's been up here.
But some people want respect. It's a two-way street. I go to work, and I work with some Haitians. Some of them are good, some of them are bad. I like to sit there and listen to rap music that refers to women as bitches and hoes and uses the N-word, and they want diversity and they want respect. That's a two-way street. And that's how it should be. I grew up in these projects up here, and I can't move up there even though I'm a veteran, but they want to give immigrants, how isn't ahead of me because my skin ain't the right color? Right. I know they don't want to hear this. I know they don't want to hear this politically incorrect talk, but that's simply the way it is. They want respect, respect's a two-way street, folks. You want it, you give it. If you don't give it, you're not going to get it. And that's the way it works. It's not to do with racism, it has to do with the truth. That's all I'm saying.
Listen up. I've got the floor. Now, listen, you're either here to voice your opinions and have respect for the other people voicing their opinions as well. This is not a format for cross-debate. You're here as a courtesy of the City Council, and we respect your opinions. But I am not going to listen to you argue with other people who are speaking, who are up here displaying their opinions as well. So if you're not able to maintain the order of this meeting, I'll call for recess, and I'll have the chambers here cleared. Now, this is the last speaker. Let's finish this up. The City Council may be here till midnight tonight, working on these things, and these are not, none of these issues are any that we take lightly. But I am not going to tolerate a breakdown of respect in this chambers. We also have a hundred and twenty-five-year history here, and I'm not going to allow anyone, no matter who they are, to disrespect that history. So I'm asking you, hold your tone. Everybody had a right to speak. Everybody has a right to voice their opinion. This gentleman has the same right. Thank you, sir.
I just want to finish by saying that my brother putting the post up about peasants, he's wrong. And I told him that. And he knows he's wrong. He said something stupid in a moment of anger. And Mr. O'Donnell, Sergeant O'Donnell, will tell you that I did seventeen years in prison, and I seen good and evil in every race. I seen good white people and pieces of garbage white people, along with every other race, sir. I believe in diversity to a certain point. I mean, we're not going to embrace the KKK neo-Nazi lifestyle. That's diversity too, right? No, of course we're not. But I believe in being fair and just, regardless of color, of skin, or ethnicity. And that's all I've got to say. God bless you, folks. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. All right, I will entertain a motion to close public participation. Okay, actually, I'm going to hold that motion. Mr. Mayor, please join us.
Thank you, members of the City Council, Mr. President. I know you all do not want to be here as much as I want to be here, because we've worked very, very hard as a group to really make this a very inclusive and diverse and accepting community. We all have, from schoolteachers, to police officers, to firemen, to our city council members, mayors, with our residents, from different community groups. We've truly worked very, very hard to make this a, that city that the state actually looks at and respects. And we are that city. From our award-winning sports programs, to our award-winning band programs, and all the great things that are happening in the city of Everett. And this very disgusting post that was posted on Facebook is not, does not resemble what we are as residents in the city of Everett. And I just want to ensure that all those residents that are watching this evening, and I think all of you could say the same thing I'm saying tonight, that we love this city, we love our people who live in this community, we've done so much over the years to make sure that this is the greatest city in the Commonwealth, and a city that, you know, we are getting awards in Washington for being a city that's leading the charge on the opioid crisis, a city that's leading the charge on obesity, a city that's leading the charge on diversity. We're doing so many great things. And I want to just ensure that my, the residents in our community, Haitian, Italian, Irish, French, German, whatever you may be, we accept everyone, we love everyone here in our community, and we want to put this behind us and move forward and continue on doing the great things for our families, our children, our seniors, which we're all doing. And again, this hate has to stop. It's unfortunate you hear some of it coming out of Washington, DC, but that will all change. Everything changes. And we will get through this also. And I want to thank everyone who came up this evening to show support for their families and their friends. Comments that were made, for the most part, were great to hear. And I hope that everyone in the audience this evening feels the same way that we feel, that the leaders of this community do love and care about them and work very tirelessly on their behalf. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Make the motion to close public participation.
There will be a motion to close public participation. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We're calling a ten-minute recess. We will resume in ten
Excuse us, customary thanks. We have a motion for favorable action. Do you have a question?
I just wanted to say hi.
Hi. All right. Different night, a lot of action. Though I can't say different, same day, different stuff, right? You can't see anything good. You can't say that the same day, different stuff. You know, this is everything that's only happened since we've just got to do all these things. Play it next week. You don't see it.
Got a quorum? All right, we're gonna, we're, I'm gonna bring back to order the meeting of the, of the city council. I'm gonna ask any discussions in the audience, please take them out in the hallway.
Thanks, Danny.
Okay, I'm gonna ask the clerk to reread the roll, please.
Counselor Capone.
Here.
Counselor Delasola.
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Counselor DePiero.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Counselor Marchese.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor Matuski.
Here.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Present.
Counselor Simonelli.
Here.
And President Napolitano.
Here.
I have ten members present, Mr. President.
Okay, clerk will read the norm, regular order of business.
Item number one. Item number one.
We got it.
Mr. President, this is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president. In accordance with chapter two dash nine B of the Everett City Charter, the following measure shall be declared an emergency and order supplementing prior and future loan orders to permit the application of sale premium to the, to pay project cost.
Mr. President, before the discussion goes any further, I just want to make a motion to accept the preamble first of this item.
Okay, clerk will read the preamble.
The preamble reads, whereas CFO Demus received this order on Wednesday, April 4th, from bond counsel, and whereas this order needs to be approved for a bond to be executed this week. Therefore, in, in order supplementing prior and future loan orders to permit the application of sale premium to pay project cost.
Can we have Mr. Demus before us?
Before we do that, he made a motion to accept it.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have a motion to accept the preamble, second.
I need that as a roll call.
That's fine, I actually have that.
All right, I was just checking, sorry.
All right, so the, there's gonna be a roll call vote to accept the preamble. Clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor De, Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
That would be ten yeas, zero nays, you have accepted the preamble.
Okay, Mr. President. Counselor McKinnon, to Mr. Demus, could you just go over briefly a little bit of what this is? One of the council members had a question. Yeah.
Would you like me to read the order?
How long is it?
It's not long at all. Yes, I can do that. That the city votes to supplement each prior order of this city council that authorizes the borrowing of money to pay cost of capital projects to provide that. In accordance with chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, the premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder, less any such premium, applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to, to pay project cost, and the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied.
Counselor McKinnon, you still have the floor.
Thank you. To Mr. Demus, if you could just give a brief description of what we're trying to do here.
Sure. Thank you, Eric Demus, CFO. Two years ago, there was major finance reforms that were done underneath Mass General law. One of them dealt with municipal bond premiums. In years past, if a community issued fifteen million dollars in bonds and received a one million dollar premium, the one million dollar premium came in as a revenue, and the city actually issued fifteen million dollars in debt. When the laws were changed, a number of finance laws were changed two years ago underneath the Municipal Modernization Act, the MMA actually stated that if a community issued fifteen million dollars in bonds on the open market, received a one million dollar premium, then what would happen is that premium would be applied to the actual debt. So, the only thing that would actually be issued is the net amount, in this case, would be fourteen million. The order before you is very similar to the language that this, the city council approved last year, prior to issuing of debt. I've been working with bond counsel for the past two months. This request from bond counsel just came last week, I believe it came in on Wednesday. I'm still unclear as to why they want us to do it again, because all the order does is say that the city is going to comply with the statute. We have no other option but to comply with the statute and, and have every desire to comply, so. All I know is bond counsel said, could you please have city council pass this order again, prior to issuing bonds? I certainly would like to get the debt issuance done before rates continue to rise, which is why I thought that I would request the preamble and the emergency vote.
Thank you.
No further questions.
Counselor Marchese, your question.
I have a statement. Quick question, our premium, meaning money get, that we get from the state, right?
No, what a, what a bond premium is, is that we actually, the city issues our debt out on the open market, so we actually sell our bonds on the open market in New York. And we receive a bond rating, and then we send out a prospectus. And we see what bond investors are willing to provide to fill those, to fill that bonding needs. And it's actually quite competitive. As the city's bond rating increases, so does the competitiveness. So, one of the things that always happens when you issue debt on the open market is there is a premium that is offered by the bondholders to make it more attractive for the city to actually select that particular bondholder.
And does that premium find its way back to the city at all, even though there's debt?
It, it does, it does through net debt. So, historically, what happened, again, if we issued fifteen million dollars in bonds and we received a one million dollar premium, we would receive fifteen million dollars in bond proceeds and a million dollar premium. State law was changed a couple of years ago, and now how it works is if we were to issue fifteen million dollars in bonds on the open market and receive a one million dollar premium, now what would happen is we would actually only receive fourteen million dollars net. So, we still receive the premium, it's just we're not taking it and putting it into our general fund as a revenue source, it just nets down what we actually have to pay back.
And just one quick question, and I know it's a little different than we just talked, what are grants? How would they, if we get grants from the state, whatever, do they, what do they count for us, are they just neutral?
Well, we actually, we receive grants from both the federal government, the state government, as well as private governments, private, private individuals or organizations. And how a grant works is, you know, one of the ones that just jumps to mind is the school lunch food program grant. So, the federal government has a school lunch grant program, and what they do is they actually provide us with grant funds to provide school lunch services.
All right, for instance, say we appropriate a hundred thousand dollars for school lunch, and we got a grant for seventy-five thousand, where's that twenty-five thousand extra go?
Well, in the instance...
Is there a general fund in the school department that where they can use any place they want?
In the example that you just provided, you would have a hundred thousand dollar appropriation, and then upon accepting of the grant would be an additional spending authorization, if you will.
Okay, so...
So, it's treated similar as to an appropriation.
Okay, so if it was not all sold, where would that go? I mean, where, where would that money go if they didn't use all of it?
Where does it end up?
Where's it end up, is what I'm saying.
Okay, so, any unspent appropriations in the general fund would just flow in return to free cash.
Yep.
However, the majority of the grants we receive are reimbursement based. So, you know, I'll jump over to special education because it's a little bit easier, because it's a direct reimbursement. What'll happen is the federal government through the state will say, we are gonna give you ten million dollars for special education, and you're allowed to spend it on these various budgetary categories. Once that's actually accepted by school committee, that becomes an available funding mechanism.
But what happens to the, what we appropriate for special ed? For instance, say we appropriate five million, where does, you know, where does the money go if we get ten? Where does, there's also extra money, I mean, extra money floating around, right? Do you understand?
If you appropriate, if, if...
If we, if we grant you a certain amount and you get a grant for half that, there's half that money somewhere, where would that money go? Would that just go into the...
So, if you had an appropriation within the general fund, and then during that year after that appropriation, we received a grant for the exact same purpose?
Yep.
Then what would happen is we would apply the expenditures to the grant, basically, the free money, if you will. And then the appropriation that would be unspent goes back to the general fund, would be, just roll back in as an unspent appropriation to free cash.
All right, so that, but that never shows up as additional monies appropriate, say, by the school department or something? So, if there's ten million dollars in grants that doesn't show, come up on the, on the budget, is what I'm saying.
Well, when they put their budget together, they base it upon their prior year grants.
Prior year grants, all right, thank you.
Okay, as soon as there's no further questions.
Favorable action.
Motion.
Excuse us, customary thanks.
Excuse us, customary thanks.
We did.
We have a motion for favorable action, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for, clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Okay, you have passed item number, number one. Before we resume, I just want to remind the, the council members of rule seventy-eight on the city council rules, electronic devices prohibit. During any formal meeting of the city council or any committee thereof, the use of electronic devices by members shall be limited to activities that are pertinent to such meetings. So, if you're got a cellphone out or an iPad and it's not relevant to the meeting, I suggest you put it away. Item will read, clerk will read item number two.
Suspend the rules and take item number seven.
We have a motion to suspend the rules and take item number seven. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number seven.
Item number seven, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Michael J. McGlaughlin to discuss the construction going on at Centilli and Sweets Circle, and the construction, the construction equipment at this park, that is parked on the island at Main Street, with no recommendation, with the request to invite city engineer Greg St. Louis to the regular meeting of April ninth to discuss the matter.
Accept the motion to, accept the committee report and place it on file? Do you have a second? All in favor? The ayes have it? Counselor McGlaughlin.
Can I ask that we invite up Mr. St. Louis to discuss this item, please?
St. Louis, if you just state your name and, and position for the record.
Greg St. Louis, Director of Public Services and Engineering.
Counsel McGlaughlin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, through you to, to St. Louis, I know, I have, over the past several weeks, I, I believe we had amended this to add the whole city council as a, as a whole. I think many of us had concerns or questions regarding the work that was being done in both Centilli Circle and Sweets Circle. I've seen Jersey barriers go up since this piece went on that has the name of Jay D'Enzo and company on them, so I'm assuming that has to do with the casino site, knowing that they're subcontracting for the casino site. But my main concern is the island that is, or strip of grass, if you will, that is in front of sixty-six Main Street, in front of the homes that are, that go under sort of the rotary bear off on the right-hand side of the southbound side of Main Street. That island, if you will, is, became a night...
Greg St. Louis, Director of Public Services and Engineering.
Counsel McGlaughlin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, through you to, um, Mr. St. Louis, St. Louis, I know, I have, uh, over the past several weeks, I, I believe we had amended this to add the whole City Council as a, as a whole. Um, I think many of us had concerns or questions regarding the work that was being done in both Santilli Circle and Sweets' Circle. I've seen Jersey barriers go up since this piece went on that has the name of Jay D'Enzo and Company on them, so I'm assuming that has to do with the casino site, uh, knowing that they're subcontracting for the casino, um, site. But my main concern is the island that is, or strip of grass, if you will, that, uh, is in front of sixty-six Main Street, in front of the homes that are, that go under sort of the rotary, uh, bear off on the right-hand side of the southbound side of Main Street. Um, that island, if you will, is, uh, became a night, a nightmare. Um, it's really deplorable conditions over there, the mud has to be several inches deep. Um, I don't know if there's pictures previous to them packing the equipment on the site, but I'm hoping that we're going to get that location back up to a pre, uh, pleasant, um, site for the residents in that area. If you could elaborate on that a little bit and just give us some detail of what you understand and what you know of, I think this is going to be an issue that needs to be worked on beyond these council chambers tonight, but I want to show, uh, want to at least get the ball started, um, and then we can work together on this. Thank you.
Certainly. Uh, so, there is some mitigation work associated with the wind development occurring on Route sixteen, and the contractor has chosen, uh, Sweets' Circle and Santilli Circle as some of the limited area available for staging in this corridor. Uh, you may notice that as you proceed east from Broadway, there's very little space to store equipment on this site. So, as they're preparing to install new bumpouts, new crosswalks, new sidewalks in and around these areas to facilitate improved, uh, traffic management, throughout the winter, they were storing in these locations. Now, now that the snow's gone, obviously, some of those, uh, damaged areas are more exposed, more prevalent, it's the wet season, so the topsoil's holding, uh, to say too much water, it is certainly, uh, mucky and muddy. Uh, as far as pre-existing conditions, um, there's always Google Earth photos, aerial phot, photography from the state. These areas are within the DCR layout, DCR is considered to be part of Mass DOT, uh, and as such, the contractor will be conditioned to restore the areas to existing, uh, prior to construction.
Excuse, St. Louis, Mr. St. Louis, when do you think we can see some sort of, uh, remedy to this situation, some sort of, uh, cleanup of this area? Even if it's not a final cleanup, we have to get it somewhat better than what it is today. Um, the building, uh, the senior building at sixty-six Main Street, they spent a lot of money annually on their premises on the outside as this time year, time of year rolls around, um, on landscaping and cleaning up of their site, they have a little patio area out front that some of the residents set out at on eve, on evenings. When can we at least see some grade, do you think, uh, better than what it is today, if it's not final because work is going to continue? Just an improvement from where it is today, do you think that can happen in the near future?
Uh, I would say in the next couple of months, you're going to see them move further, uh, down the corridor. They've, they've done a lot of the bumpout work in the, uh, Sweets' Circle area, the Santilli work as well, uh, a lot of the subsurface work has been done, they're going to start pulling new electric cables in that area, um, until the Best Buy goes into construction. But, um, yeah, it's, it's going to be a couple of months to, uh, sort of utilize the construction season, the pavement plants aren't even open yet, um, so it's, it's going to be a couple of months in order to get them out of there. Uh, I've contacted the contractor, the state, and DCR, wind has also done the same, so we're putting pressure on them to move along, um, so we'll try to expedite as much as possible.
St. Louis, whose equipment is it that's parked on that isle, on that parcel of land currently? Is it Jay D'Enzo and Company?
Um, I think there's a number of subcontractors that are out there as well. To say it's any one company, I wouldn't commit to say it's any one.
I see there's large, large pieces of yellow pipe on the, on the island, is that gas pipe?
Uh, typically, gas pipe is yellow.
So, that would be National Grid?
Correct.
Equipment? So, because there is multiple contractors on site, who would be responsible for cleanup of the site?
Uh, whoever the permittee is with the state.
And who owns that parcel of land? It's not the city of Everett, correct?
Both parcels of land are owned by DCR.
By the DCR. So, when we go in there and cut it or maintain it during the summer, we're doing that as courtesy to the residents down there because it is the DCR land, correct?
Correct.
So, we're doing it just as a courtesy to maintain that parcel of land?
Correct.
I think we need to, uh, I'm going to yield the floor to my colleagues, but I think we are going to need to get, um, the state, state leaders involved in this, um, Senator DiDomenico, Representative McGonigal, uh, we need to get this area cleaned up from what it is today. I understand there's going to be ongoing construction for a while down there, but it needs to improve from where it is today to some sort of, uh, satisfaction for, for the residents in that area. But I'll yield the floor to my colleagues, thank you.
Counsel Delasola.
Good evening. Um, Santilli Circle, personally, I don't have an issue with what's going on down there. My question down, on that piece is, how is that involved with the casino? They're putting drainage, electrical in and all that at Santilli Circle to the casino?
Uh, it's, to my knowledge, it's not, uh, wet utilities, it is electrical improvements, and some of the electrical improvements are associated with the, uh, relocation of other commercial entities from Lower Broadway to the Air Force Road neighborhood. So, they're improving some of those feeds to support the larger power demand in that area.
Okay, my biggest concern is, Counsel McGlaughlin, is that down at sixty-six Main Street, I did talk to the contractor, DeVro, that equipment down there is for the gas mains they're installing around the area, correct?
Uh, they're installing gas mains up at Oaks and Tileston.
The staging area they're at now where the mess is, who gave them permission to park? Because that mess they're making now on sixty-six Main Street is only to park the equipment, not to do the work itself.
Correct.
And my problem is DeVro's yard is right behind, um, down there Teddy Peanut Butter and behind, uh, Night Shift Brewery. So, it's right there, and they have dump trucks and baccals parked on that patch of grass, that's a mess now. And I'm in that line of work, I don't understand, for once they had to get permission to park there, if they didn't, they're wrong. The second thing is, they could drive down the street with a machine or a dump truck, the excavator, I, I understand, but the pipe, I understand, but they parked the dump trucks out there over the weekend in the baccals, they're literally three minutes away from their own yard, which is down behind, uh, Night Shift Brewery. So, that's my biggest problem down there. Um, you're saying a couple of months from now, I think they should, it's getting nicer out, clean up that area and have to park their equipment down at their own yard. You know, if National Grid is supplying a spot, if down the end of that road down where Devro, um, DiVincenzo's yard is, but to be on that island and the mess it is now, it just, I just don't get why they're parking there when their yard is so close.
I can reach out to the contractor again, see if they can minimize the equipment stored there, and I'll reach out to DCR again, then.
I did talk to, uh, Dan Walsh, he's a supervisor for DeVro, and he'll look into it, and they may actually beautify it better than what it was once they are done, they've been known to do that.
Yep.
So, I'm hoping this, it's not going to go away, so I'm hoping, uh, we keep an eye on it. Thank you.
Counsel Marquez.
I'm, I'm fine. Uh, you answered, um, the, the question I was going to ask about the yard, why it was, uh, parked there.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Obviously, we had a person here from sixty-six Main Street complaining, and basically, what they want to know is when this is going to end, all right? We understand there's a lot of construction going down in the city, and people don't want to look out their window and see that mess, but it has to be done. The gas pipes have to be done, everything has to be done. Now, according to the counselor, he's saying to invite, uh, Senator and the representative here, I don't think that's necessary.
Does he want me to do it?
Yes, so let, let's send them a letter and ask them what the, um, I'm trying to finish my speech, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel DeFlorio has the floor.
Okay.
I'm asking, remember to refrain from commenting, please.
All I'm asking is, let's write them a letter and ask exactly what the person said from sixty-six Main Street. He wants to know how long this is going to be and when it's going to stop. So, if this is a state issue, our state delegation can give it to us in writing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Second the motion.
Second.
Excuse with the customary thanks.
What is the motion? In fact, first off, we could excuse the customary thanks, do I have a second? All in favor?
Excuse the customary thanks, and I will put that in the form of a, I will put that in the form of a motion.
Do I have a second? Motion, will you please refrain, repeat the motion for clerk?
Send a letter to Senator DiDomenico and Representative McGonigal, asking them how long this project is going to go on, and to please give it to us in writing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to request, on the motion, Counsel Delasola.
Are you doing Santilli Circle or in front of sixty-six Main Street right now?
All of it.
It's two different projects?
I understand that.
I mean, if I have the floor-
Counsel Delasola, if you would.
To resolve the one, the main subject, sixty-six Main Street, if we talk to National Grid and talk to DeVro, the contractor, this can be resolved in two days. They're just parking the equipment on the grass. You don't have to go to the State House for Sally DiDomenico or, and no disrespect to Counsel, DeFlorio, that, in, uh, Senator, uh, DiDomenico, it's, it's not, they have nothing to do with this. It's National Grid, the city's allowing National Grid to park the equipment in that area, in our city, without permission, or they could stop it within two days. We want to send it, that's fine, I just think Santilli Circle, whole different story. But up at sixty-six Main Street, that's, it's, it's not even a state project that's being done. They're putting a gas main in, in the city of Everett for the residents of Everett, just for information, please.
I actually have a question for the city engineer, if you could, motion to bring him back up.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it?
Mr. St. Louis.
I may ask this, like, this question because I remember years ago, the old City Council having problems getting those, those, the grass on there cut, and it came down to a question of the state, it was the state's area, not the city's. Who is responsible for the property that these vehicles are being parked on? Is it city property, is it state property? Do you know?
To my knowledge, it's DCR property. There are a number of maintenance items that the city undertakes, such as plowing the bridges to ensure that the public can traverse back and forth following a snowstorm. Those type of items tend to be the last items on the state's to-do list because they're looking at the larger infrastructure, so we fast-track those types of items. It also includes the cutting of the grass typically.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Capone, you still have-
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, through you to, uh, Mr. St. Louis, thank you for being here. One of the biggest questions is time. Has your office been notified about timeframe of the project at all, or do you have any sense of, of the timeframe on that?
Uh, the timeframes we are given are for the large scope of work, it's not restricted to when they will be staging in that area.
Okay.
Uh, certainly, if they're doing work up the street on the city's right-of-way and they're staging in DCR's right-of-way, they should have got a permit for that, but I do not control the staging, nor did I give authorization to stage there. I would say it's not uncommon for me to yield such items with the caveat that they're restored in full upon completion.
Okay, and then the only other thing I'd impress a point, I know you said that you would do it, one of my colleagues had, had mentioned that, uh, their yard is literally minutes down the street. There's absolutely no reason why pieces of equipment that ha, that are very easily transported back and forth need to sit there over the weekend, so appreciate anything you can do with that regard, so, thank you.
And to that end, I mean, to say an excavator would have to be put on a flatbed and put back and forth, I would understand excavator, but the dump trucks could certainly-
Okay, thank you very much, I don't have any other questions.
Any other questions? Excuse my, thank you for coming back up. All right, so right now, we have one motion on the floor, it's been seconded, clerk will read the motion, just so everybody's on the same page.
The motion is to send a letter to our state delegation, the Senator and the representative, asking how long this project will be going, these projects will be going forward with the letter sent back to all the City Council, um, on, and you want it at the, was it at a next committee meeting, or did you want it just sent? From what I understood, was just sent back to you?
We'll give them a month, uh-
But you want it back to the council?
Yes.
Into a meeting?
Yes.
Is what you, okay.
Counsel McGlaughlin, did you have something to add? Okay, so we have a motion, clerk just read, to, uh, reach out to the state delegation. Um, clerk will read the, uh, this is a resolution.
Yeah, and it's-
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Do we have any items on the sign-in sheet? No.
Mr. Chairman, no, we don't have any other items on the sign-in sheet.
Right, so let's revert back to the regular order of business. Clerk will read item number two.
Item number two is an order offered by Counsel Peter N. Napolitano, as President, to accept a donation of three cases equalling seventy-two blankets worth five hundred and thirteen dollars and fourteen cents from John Matuschio, DBA, the Scrubbing Board. The blankets will be used in the cell block area of the police department.
Favorable action on the order and-
Thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I, I think many of us know John Matuschio, uh, he's a gentleman with deep roots in this community, he does a lot of good for many sectors of the city, uh, the fire department, the police department, seniors, he never looks for any recognition, he never looks for anything back, he's just another example of some of the quality folks that we have in this community, we're very lucky to have him. So, on the piece, uh, I would just ask for favorable action, accept the donation with a letter of thanks.
Second, um, we have a motion to, uh, accept the item, uh, at least the-
Do we have a voice vote in this?
No, it's, it's an order.
It's an order.
Okay.
It's a financial order, see, I need.
So, we have a motion to accept the, uh, the donation, uh, with a letter of, uh, thanks. Uh, clerk will read the roll.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Marquez?
Yes.
Counsel Metuski?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
President Napolitano?
Yes.
That'd be eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
You have passed item number two. Clerk will read item number three.
And, and could some of the members just turn off their mics, I'm hearing the, um-
Uh, uh, we can make a motion, we take three and four collectively?
That's fine, but we're still going to vote for them separately, Counsel, just so you know.
Mr. President, I think I'd like to excuse myself on three and four, so there's no conflict of interest here, is, uh, clearly, Tom, is related to myself.
Okay.
Thank you.
On item number three, Mr. President, it's an order, a petition for a renewal of an open-air parking license from AG Quayle Towing at fifty-four Robin Street. Item number four, Mr. President, is a petition for a renewal of an open-air parking license from AG Quayle Towing at twenty-six Garvey Street.
Papers of order?
All papers are in order, and they're-
Move for favorable action, I guess, on number three.
We have a motion for favorable action, item three, do I have a second?
Yep.
All, uh, clerk will read the roll.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel, um, Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Marquez?
Yes.
Counsel Metuski?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli? Councilor Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
That's 10 yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
You've passed item number three. Clerk will read item number four.
I read it, Mr. President.
Favorable action before. We have a motion for favorable action, second. Clerk will read the roll.
Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor De Florio?
Yes.
Councilor De Perro?
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon?
Yes.
Councilor Marchese?
Yes.
Councilor Matusky?
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon?
Yes.
Councilor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
10 yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
You've passed item number four. Clerk will read item number five.
Item number five, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilors Michael McLaughlin and Councilors Michael Marchese to discuss the resident ordinance that was put in place for police and fire, with recommendation to refer to mayor to include the residency requirement in future bargaining.
Council McLaughlin.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we refer this to Legislative Affairs and Elections Committee. In committee, we learned that this would have to become an ordinance for us to be able to implement it in the future negotiations, and I would like to recommend that we put this into committee so that we can work on it and come out at some point that is time-sensitive to what the actual ordinance. So refer to Legislative Affairs.
If I could, we don't, we're not directly involved with union negotiations. This is something that is, was, I believe the committee was intended to send it to the mayor's office with a recommendation for the next negotiation set. We can't make.
No, our thought, Mr. President, our thought was to send it to the mayor to work with us in committee to create an ordinance that he would be able to implement in the future. That's what we had to do in committee.
There isn't, if I could, there is an ordinance in place, but it's non-binding because it's never been negotiated with the union. That's the issue. One second. Right, the motion, the motion from, as cleared up with the clerk, was to send it to the mayor's office because this is not within our authority. That's the motion. Council McLeod?
That may not be in our thought, but when we send this up to the Congress, this piece is officially dead. But if it's part of an ordinance that, of an ordinance that, it has to be, it has to be required when they negotiate the next, the next thing.
The thing is, you can't give a directive to the mayor to put this into negotiations.
No, but we can make an ordinance out of it.
But even, but we have an ordinance, we're saying it, but what you're saying is to put it in an ordinance, to make it a directive for the mayor to bargain, and we don't have, you as a legislative body don't have the authority to do so. You can create an ordinance, but the mayor has to implement it, and if he doesn't bargain it in, you can't implement it. Am I correct, Colleen? Solicitor, sorry. Yep, so, like you said, we already have the ordinance, they have to bargain it. So sending it back to Legislative Affairs to create an ordinance you already have, you can't make it, strengthen it anymore because you can't order the administration to do anything.
But it had no legs, that's why it never was used this year.
No, it's actually, even if you didn't have it in an ordinance, if the mayor wanted to, the mayor is the chief executive, if he decides to negotiate with any union to put that in, so he, say he gives something, and they, and he gets that, he has the authority. Putting it in ordinance won't make a difference because you can't order the mayor, our CEO of the city, to do that.
But we can't order it to be as a bargaining chip. It doesn't have to be there, but it should be offered at least.
Yeah, but it's his decision.
Exactly, but at least it should be offered, it wasn't offered, obviously, on this one.
But you can't do it through ordinance, is what I'm saying. You don't have the authority as a legislative body to order the mayor in any way, shape, or form, even through an ordinance. That's just, that's just the separation of powers. He can't order you, you can't order him.
Before we take this.
I'm just trying to.
Before we take this further, I'll entertain a motion to invite the city solicitor come up to be able to maybe clear this up for us. Next question.
Good evening.
Could you, first of all, just for the record, first of all, tonight, could you just state your name and record?
Sure. There's already an existing ordinance. It's non-binding because there was a court case that mandates that the, that management negotiates the, a residency requirement with unions. So whether you draft a new ordinance or you use the existing ordinance, it's still non-binding. It has to be negotiated.
So, if I may.
Counsel Marchese, please continue.
So if I may, the ordinance wasn't used?
We actually, we were using it, we were enforcing it, and then we found this court case, so.
Yeah, from late, that was a couple of years ago, but we had passed this after that. No one ever told us that it was non-binding.
It was.
But it still can be used in a union negotiation because the ordinance is on the board.
You can, it's a mandatory subject of bargaining.
Exactly.
So you have to, you have to negotiate it, and the union can reject it, accept it, counterpropose, you know, so.
All right, thank you. Council McKinnon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our city solicitor. Has this been proposed to them in negotiations?
I'm not allowed to talk about what.
Oh, because we're still in.
It's confidential, yeah.
Okay, so it's still going on, ongoing talks? If we would, how would we propose it to you to see if they could actually, it has to go through the mayor's office on that point?
Right, you can make a recommendation to the mayor, and the mayor can take the recommendation and use it or not.
Okay.
But unfortunately, the sessions, the details of negotiations at the bargaining table are confidential.
Okay, thank you.
Council De Florio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Actually, I don't have a question for the city solicitor.
Excuse.
But if.
Okay, if you have a comment, hold until I raise the question.
Well, I don't have a comment, I just want to clarify something, that, first of all, it was also city workers. It wasn't just the police and the fire. And, and I know this is not, you know, it's not up to us as far as negotiating with the unions, and that's not what we're trying to do.
We wrote the ordinance.
All we want to know from the mayor, if he's abiding by the ordinance, that's all. All right, it's a resolution, we're not asking him to come here, we're just, he can give it to us in writing.
Well, the motion in the committee was to send the resolution to the mayor's office, and that's what it is. It's a recommendation, as we've already made clear, because of the distinct differences between executive and legislative branch, we cannot dictate to the mayor on what course of action. We're making a recommendation, that's what the item is. I commend the sponsors for their recommendation. It's been to committee, you know, I would think the prudent course of action would be to refer to the mayor's office and move on. So.
That's what.
Before I do that, though, there's one speaker left, I don't want to cut everybody out. Council McLaughlin.
Again, I was going to make a recommendation, refer it to the mayor's office, but like Council De Florio said, I'm just wondering if it is being discussed. Is it on the table, is it a possibility?
Why, I can't.
Our city solicitor can't, but in the future, can the mayor elaborate on it when time is appropriate to let us know whether or not it is being discussed, or it's on the table, or I'm sure at some point it will be appropriate time to discuss it.
Then the correct course of action would be to put it on, put it on as agenda item, ask the mayor to come in and ask him that specific question.
So then they should be referred back to sponsor.
But in this situation here, this is a recommendation that we send to the mayor's office.
Okay.
Okay. I have a motion to send this item to the mayor's, refers to the mayor's office, and also accept the communication, place on file. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Clerk will read item number six.
Item number six is a resolution offered by Councilor Peter Enapolitano to assign a uniform auxiliary police officer to attend all regular meetings of the city council to act as a sergeant of arms, with the recommendation to refer back to sponsor.
Council Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, in today's day and age, it's unfortunate, I've been up here for a long, long time. And years ago, we did have to have a police officer, there are three or four occasions when your brother was president of the Board of Alderman, Joe Marchese, there was an unruly individual in the chamber. But, you know, I got to tell you, the more I watch the news, it's frightening, it really is. And I believe your idea of having auxiliary police was a good idea, but unfortunately, we did receive a letter from the chief explaining that he would not be armed, and I really believe, and it's unfortunate, you know, it's a sad state of affairs, but I believe we have to protect this chamber.
Why, Mr. Chairman?
When we have a meeting, and I really believe that.
You wish.
Security is paramount. We're in a day and age now where this, a mental illness is rampant. They had to shoot a man in Everett Square with a knife who wouldn't drop it just a year ago. It just goes on and on, and, you know, I bump into some individuals that I, I really clearly see that they have an illness, so I think we should, as a city council, request, the president's the only one that can do that according to the response that the chief gave us, our president has to request police presence at our meetings. And I believe that for the safety of not only us, but for the people in this chamber and the people that work at City Hall, we should be protected. It's only a few hours, three, maybe four hours at a time, but for every regular meeting where they know, we are, you know, it's publicized when we're having meetings, the whole nine yards, so I just really think, in this day and age, that we have to protect, it's pretty sad to say that, but we have the casino coming in, there's a lot of activity in this community, and I want to feel safe, and I want the people in this chamber to be safe, and my colleagues. So I think we've come to a day and age where we must have protection in this chamber, and I agree with the president's resolution, only the auxiliary can't do it, but I would hope that the presidency's fit to request a police officer. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council Napolitano?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, again, I want to thank Council Matusky, I don't think he and I have been on the same page for as much the last lately as we have in our 20-year relationship, so I want to explain a few things, first of all, regarding this. Yes, absolutely, with this day and age, situations like what tonight developed into attracts fanatics. Fanatics don't care who's in the audience, or who's here, or what the issue is, they're just looking for attention, media attention, and all they care about is getting their name out there for whatever their cause is. Having said that, you know, with this situation developed tonight, I had no problems getting the chief on board for a police detail, to make sure that the safety and the security of our, of our members and our residents was ensured. The reason why I'm asking this to go back to sponsors for a couple of reasons. One, I was not able to connect with the chief prior to the request in the first place. That gave the chief the wrong impression as to why, my reasoning for this. There's also a few things that the chief had mentioned in his response that, to me, were red flags. One, comment that the Everett Auxiliary Police do not have police powers. Well, in my research under Chapter 47, the Everett Police do in fact have police powers, I know that from when I was an Everett Auxiliary Police Officer. So we need to address that issue and get that out, and we're going to work with the city solicitor's office to address that. The other thing is whether the reserves are, should be armed or not, well, unfortunately, the administrative code states that they cannot, but at the same time, they're also a component of our disaster preparedness plan. Now, I'm not trying to turn this question into an issue over the auxiliaries, but the thing is that I have a meeting with the chief this Wednesday, and this is the main subject. One, why the need for a more comprehensive auxiliary force? And my whole suggestion of asking for an auxiliary police officer was, again, to lend them some exposure, you know, you know, I think of the auxiliary police, I don't think of the past couple of years, we've had maybe a dozen guys. I'm thinking when I was, when I first joined the auxiliaries in 87, where there were 45 to 50 guys, all mostly former veterans, who took that experience and brought it and volunteered it to the city. That's the legacy of the Everett Auxiliary Police. So that's a discussion for another time, and I'll be actually starting that discussion on Wednesday. But for right now, this particular resolution needs to be spaled out a little bit, a little deeper with the chief, and I, and that's my intention to do that on Wednesday. So at this time, there's no sense of holding on to this, we've got some issues in response that we have to address, which we are working to address and answer. So at this point, that's the only reason I'm asking this, to go back to sponsor. It's not going to go away, but in the current form of the request, I don't believe it's the right way to go at this time.
Thank you. Have one more speaker?
Oh, awesome, thanks.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? Item number eight?
Item number eight, Mr. Chairman, is an ordinance offered by Councilor Peter Enapolitano as president, new subsections to be accepted regarding purchase of annual meter stickers.
Accept the committee report, place on file, and favorable action?
Second motion. The motion is accept committee report, place on file, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? The motion completed. I was making a.
There's favorable action.
Motion is, thank you, motion is for favorable action. Clerk, and it's been seconded, clerk will read the roll.
And just so we know, this is for enrollment, this is the first vote. Council Capone?
Yes.
Council De La Sola?
Yes.
Council De Florio?
Yes.
Council De Perro?
Yes.
Council Hanlon?
No.
Council Marchese?
Yes.
Council Matusky?
Yes.
Council McKinnon?
Yes.
Council Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
That would be nine yeas, one nay. Mr. President?
You've passed item number eight. Clerk will read item. It's been enrolled. Clerk will read item number nine.
Item number nine, Mr. President, is an ordinance offered by Councilor Michael K. Marchese to amend the oning ordinance color to include a black oning. This was referred to me.
Excuse me?
Council Marchese.
This was referred to you. We never met on this, did we?
No, sir. You have, do I have to tell you why we sent it to me?
No.
Okay.
Well, where should it go?
No, you sent it to me, and you gave me 60 days because I told you that the city, along with the building department and a few other departments, were working on amending, trying to come up with a new system for signs throughout the city. We were trying to come up with districts, and we are still working on it. I believe now what we're working on, and my assistant, Mr. Rigucci, has been working even a little more in-depth with the committee, is I think they're working on funding, because if you're going to mandate certain things to a business, we have to come up with some type of funding, maybe grant funding, et cetera, to help. So I know that's where it was last left off, I know that we will be reconvening meetings in the future. If it is your pleasure to still go forward with changing the ordinance, we can do that. At least in the interim, that way you can still, we don't have an ordinance, so if you wanted to put, you know, crimson and black as the ordinance, we could do that. Going forward, at least, you would, you would, that would be the requirement. Then, if there is a change with the administration, we can always come back, amend that ordinance as we see fit. So if that is your pleasure, you can do that.
Well, my pleasure would be to create an ordinance, we don't have an ordinance, obviously.
Correct, that's why I said currently it's in our rules, and you would create it.
And where would we suddenly create this ordinance?
Legislative Affairs.
Legislative Affairs. Now, the reason why I wanted black, I was led to believe that we had a crimson.
In the rules, though.
In the rules, but.
That doesn't have any teeth.
So the rule has no teeth, so, and the issue of having a black and a crimson is that, that would just be the base color, whether they wanted to add to it, if they want to put stripes, put their sign, at least it wouldn't be yellow, green, pink, orange, like we have in the city. So the motion there would be to send it to Legislative Affairs.
If we motion to send item number nine to Legislative Affairs?
Okay, so, yes, you could do this, sorry, could, can I make a, give you another? So we, there's a consultant working out of my office, Mr. Flood, is helping with redrafting the entire Chapter 12, that is all licensing, because we are removing it from rules and putting it into an ordinance, so everything has teeth, so that way it's in law. If we wanted to, he and I could work on it and draft it.
And draft it.
And send it back to you.
And amend it with.
So if you wanted to refer it back to me, give me a few weeks to work on it.
Yeah, and it should be, the two basic colors, the crimson and the black should be the basic colors, those are the only options.
I will write it to your pleasure, and then you can amend it as you wish. How's that sound?
So moved.
Okay. So we have a motion to send this to the city clerk, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it? Opposed? Opposed. Okay. So, we have a motion to send this to the city clerk. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Opposed? Opposed. Just from the chair, just one again, you're going to see more of these items. We've already identified several times over the last two sessions alone that there are rules that have been traditionally in our rules that really should be ordinances. So, the push in conjunction with Legislative Affairs, amending our rules and bringing them up to date, and the effort to move these particular items out of our rules and formulate ordinances, over the next couple of months, you're going to see a lot more of these items come through. Okay? So, just ask everybody to, you know, be patient and indulge us with this. Read it carefully. We're not trying to take anything away from our rules, but we're trying to give them more teeth so we can actually enforce them. Our rules and these issues are not enforceable. Okay? Clerk will read item number ten, please. Okay, scratch ten, that's already been done. Clerk read item number eleven.
Item number eleven. Is it an order offered by Counselor Peter Enno-Politano as president? The National Grid requesting permission to install a one SO poll on McKinley Street, also National Grid to install one SO poll, own Guy Stubb poll, number two zero five six dash one, and anchor guy poll.
All right. I believe item number eleven was actually on the agenda in error. Right now, I believe it's still in committee.
No action necessary.
So, this was, there's no action necessary on this item. It shouldn't have been on the agenda in the first place. It's on the calendar, we should take them back.
Yep. Mr. President, I would just like to update the city council. I'm a member of the utility committee, as three other of my colleagues are. We spoke to the gentleman from the company. I explained that this design was ugly. I thought it was unsafe, tripping hazard. It's a highly populated area with a lot of elderly people and children being on McKinley Street. We granted further time with the hope and request that they come back with a new design, a better design. They have some new equipment, some new poles they're going to be looking at, doing some further research, and they're going to come back to us, and they were very willing to work with us, so. That's my piece.
So, this is still in committee, though, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so there's no motion necessary, because we don't need to extend it, because it never, it never should have come out in the first place. Okay, clerk will read item number twelve, please. Thank you for the upgrade, updated information.
Item number twelve. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor John Leo McKinnon that we honor the wishes of the family of Mr. Ali, the owner of San Angelina Sub Shop, to have a dedicated square at the corner of Broadway and Parker Street in honor of his family, him and his family's service to the city and citizens of Everett for decades according to his religion. I believe this needs to be done forty days after his passing, and that the date should be on or around the fourteenth of February, and that his sign designation would be, would also be considered for dispo.
Counsel McKinnon. Could I have the chief of staff before us, please? Through you, Mr. President.
Kevin O'Donnell, chief of staff.
Through you, Mr. President, to the chief of staff. Where are we on this, chief?
Uh, we're ready to go. I believe there was some concerns in terms of naming it a square because he wasn't a veteran, but I believe it's all understood and agreed upon that we'd have a bench dedicated in his honor, and the mayor has graciously offered to donate the bench on his behalf, so we're ready to go.
Persistence goes a long way here, I guess, with this. But, yeah, this is a great family in the city, and.
Well, we all grew up on their food.
Absolutely, so.
A little tidbit, their phone num, we had the last, growing up, and my mother still has the same phone number, we had the same last four numbers. They were three eight nine, we were three eight seven.
So, you were making subs too.
My whole life I was getting ones, yeah.
So, that's great, then. All right, so it's moved in the right direction. This will be handled, any timeframe on it?
Uh, yeah, no timeframe, but we can coordinate. I mean, it should be simple enough. I could coordinate with the city clerk, and we'll have this done sooner rather than later without question.
Thank you very much. Excuse the customary thanks. Refer the. Counsel, it is your pleasure. Refer this back to sponsor, since it's already going to be.
Second.
A motion to refer back to sponsor, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number thirteen.
Before we read item number thirteen, we have a, oh, let him read it first, I'm sorry.
I haven't started.
There's a little error that we have to correct.
Yes, I'll read it, and then you can make an amendment. Item number thirteen. Is it ordinance offered by Counselor Peter Enno-Politano as president? To amend the dumpster fee schedule, section sixteen dash seventy-eight, maintenance of the revised ordinances of the city of Everett.
Counsel DeFlorio?
I'd like to strike out sixteen dash seventy-eight and replace it with sixteen dash seventy-nine.
Second.
And favorable action as amended.
Okay, we have a motion for the change, section sixteen dash seventy-eight to sixteen dash seventy-nine. It's been seconded. Counsel Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just on the piece, do we know what the existing fee is at, maybe two?
Sixty-five dollars for one of them.
And then eight units and more, what is that?
These are new. So, before, we did not designate how many units. It was flat sixty-five. So, what we did was, what you've been seeing me do in a lot of the things, trying to make it fair for everybody. So, if you have more property, you pay a little bit more. If you have less, you pay a little less. That way, it's staggered, because that way, it's not fair if one, it's one flat rate for someone, one unit or twenty units, you know? I think that was, we're talking with the health department, it seemed like it was the most fair way to go.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
All right, thank you. All right, so we have a motion to amend the section number. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We have, ask for favorable action as amended. It's been seconded. Clerk will read the roll.
Just so you know, this is for ordainment, and even though we did make an amendment, it did not change the intent of the piece, so I believe that we can go forward with it for ordainment, okay? Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Marchese?
Yes.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
That would be eleven ayes, zero nays, Mr. President.
You have ordained item number thirteen. Clerk will read item number fourteen, please.
Item number fourteen. Is a resolution offered by Counselor Peter Enno-Politano and Counselor Anthony DePiero that I represented from MBTA appear at the next government operations, public safety, and public service meeting to discuss issues with the bus routes one oh four and one oh nine during rush hours between four thirty PM and seven thirty PM.
Counsel DePiero?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, you and I both received a phone call from a constituent about the wait times that him and other citizens of the city were experiencing. He mentioned that dozens and dozens of buses passed by, and not a single one was servicing the city of Everett. I think that's unacceptable, and I would like to send this to the said committee. Thank you.
Second motion. Counsel Capone? Thank you, Mr. President. If I could as well, I'd like to get an invite to the committee meeting. I've got an individual who has a concern about the routes as well. Okay, do I have a second? All in favor? Counsel Hanlon?
Thank you very much. And that is that we cannot attend a committee meeting if we're not a member of that committee.
I have a rule.
That's just a new thing that came out, and it says that the person that comes to that meeting is also a member of the city council. It puts the council member, the council committee, at five. And I want to go to all the committee meetings, but I can't. I just found that out. And that, and I'm just saying this to my learned counselor and good friend, that we should really look this over first before we decide to go to other committee meetings, because it's against the law.
Okay, clerk has some insight on this, if you would read the.
So, I spoke with the state ethics commission. That's how they, they issue those rulings. I just gave them a general synopsis, a little question, could a fifth member come? Yes. Could a sixth member come? No. Even if a fifth member came, and see Counselor Napolitano and DePiero on this piece, right? Four of you, there's four different members. If one of you came before the board and spoke, left, went into the back area, then the next member came up, you are still deliberating as a quorum from what they explained to me. Even though you are not all simultaneously here, if all six of you are in this, whatever this area is where we vote, it still breaks the open meeting law. That is what I was explaining. The ruling came down three weeks ago, and I believe it was the city Lawrence, but I'll have to double-check which city. Got an ethics violation. I'll get you the exact city name. They had the same issue. You cannot be in the same area. There is a way to do that, but that is also simultaneously having a city council meeting or committee of the whole, but a city council meeting at the same time, and then you're defeating the purpose of having a committee, because now you're bringing everybody to a committee meeting. So, that was the explanation from the attorney at the ethics commission, and they appreciated that I posed a question before we got into a position. So, I just wanted to give you that update. It's very important that we make sure we don't break open meeting law. I know it's very difficult to do this, but it could have been low. It was, it was an L. I just couldn't remember. It's on my desk.
What we will do in the interim is, given that information, we will work on a structure to be able to allow members to come up. But if you're cosponsoring a piece before committee, then you need to designate a spokesperson, and the other member needs to not be here. We need to, this is very, very touchy area that we're working on. Another way that you might consider it is, if your cosponsor is a member of that committee, then you're able to attend because you're not pushing the number over five. But we're going to work out the mechanics of this. Last month, last meeting, we took an exceptional amount of time debating, and it wasn't even in front of us as a legitimate piece of business. Your concerns were legitimate, and that's why the clerk looked into it. But we're not done with this. We're going to, we're going to work something out that hopefully everybody can be comfortable with. We still have to conduct the business. If we're not able to bring business before committee, we got a problem. If we're in violation of the open meeting law when we're trying to bring business up before committee, we also have a problem. We'll find a solution for this, but we're going to work on this, okay?
On the motion, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please.
I would just like it specified in the letter that is sent, that we would absolutely love the individual to be here, but if they can't, we want at least a written response, so we're not left in the dark and prolonged it.
You might want to suggest inviting someone from the mayor's office as well.
Yes.
And community development.
The mayor's designated.
They work interactive with the, with the MBTA on these type of issues.
And luckily, we're both members of that committee, so that's not an issue. Thank you.
We have a motion to send item number fourteen to committee, public, government operations, public safety service. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number fifteen.
Is it ordinance offered by Counselor Peter Enno-Politano as president? To amend chapter twelve dash fifty-five of the revised ordinances, section twelve dash fifty-five conditions placed on lodging house licenses.
Counsel Matuski?
Thank you, Mr. President. After reviewing this ordinance, I believe it's a great idea to actually count every resident, because we do get reimbursed by the federal government for a citizen, and some of these rooming houses, you know, it's good to know who's actually living in them also. But, you know, I wish we could do that for every home in the city, because our colleague, Councilman Simonelli's father, as we, some may recall, he was in charge of the census in the city.
Peter Simonelli, right.
Fifteen years ago, and it was a big undertaking. What did he do, every ten years?
Yes, it's coming in two years.
So, it must have been twenty, it could have been twenty. It was the big one that they did. And Peter Simonelli, Councilman Simonelli's father actually ran that whole affair, and there was at least a hundred people from Everett that were hired. But needless to say, there are people who will not enter their doors at their home. I, you know, I wish we could extend. We actually vote on rooming, lodging house licenses, so we can actually put this in, but a private home, we couldn't do that, I don't believe, require them to enter the door and actually fill it out.
I believe the reason for this came about because there was a question by the, some of the owners of the rooming houses of whether or not they had to participate. So, the decision was that rather than make it a question, we'll make it a rule.
Now, it's mandatory?
Yes.
Well, I agree with that. I wish we could do it to every piece of property in the city. That's what I'm getting at here, but I guess we can't do that, because it robs us and the people who, I'd like to know who lives in some of these properties. You know, if you look through the residential book, you'll notice it skips a few addresses, and then our police officers are city employees, okay? Because I know, they're in my own neighborhood, I, geez, there's no number for that house, and they don't have one in the house either, so it's like a black hole. But, yeah, it's, there are properties in this city that aren't being counted in our own census.
Yes.
In the city census, and, you know, I guess there's a debate going around whether there's a checkoff on the census now, whether you're a citizen. Now, I agree that that's an acceptable question. I mean, are you a citizen? It's a simple question, yes or no? It's not asking, you know, and that's another thing that I want to bring up, but not in a racist fashion, like some people claim to be. I'd like to know who's, how many citizens actually live here. I mean, what's so wrong about that? But anyway, I'm going to vote in favor of this. At least we're starting somewhere, and I hope, there's a, I don't know if it's state law or not, but every piece of property in this city that has people living in it should be accounted for so that.
It's state law.
That we can get our reimbursement. But I'm going to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
We have a motion for favorable action. Second it. Clerk will read the roll.
Okay, this is for enrollment. Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Marchese?
Yes.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
No.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
Ten ayes, one nay, you have enrolled, Mr. President.
Okay, you have passed, have enrolled item number fifteen. One moment.
Item number sixteen is an ordinance offered by Counselor Peter Enno-Politano as president to amend the administrative code of the city chatter, code of the chatter of the city of Everett, excuse me.
Okay, item number sixteen, clerk has read that. We've already addressed it in item number ten, so.
No action, Mr. Chairman.
Intain a motion for no action?
No, you can.
Counsel Hanlon, what is the correct motion, please? Refer it back to the clerk. Okay, we have a motion, refer it to the clerk.
And what I do with it?
Okay, may I ask what the action of the clerk will be on that? Because the reason, the reason this was on here is because it, it's already been addressed on ten, so if you want to place it on file. Okay, so a motion to place item number sixteen on file and refer to the clerk. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number seventeen.
Item number seventeen. Mr. President, is an order and communication from Mayor Carlo Di Maria. It's an order offered by Counselor Peter Enno-Politano as president. At the request of the mayor, pursuant to division thirteen, School Finance Review Commission and section two dash two eight three, I hereby appoint Counsel Anthony DePiero, Counselor John F. Hanlon, and Counselor John Leo McKinnon to the School Finance Review Commission.
Okay, as we're all aware, I received a communication from the mayor's office. We filled three seats on the school finance committee. I wanted the mix of both some experienced members and our youngest member, who definitely could always stand to get his feet wet, rather than his ears. But I want to congratulate, you know, Counsel Hanlon, Counsel McKinnon, Counsel DePiero. I know the schools are, you're going to open this, take this with a good, positive outlook, which will only benefit the both the schools in the city in the long run. Along that same lines, because we're, again, pushing to improve the situation, I just want to let the membership know that I've already selected the three members who will be the delegation to join the administration, the school department, and the school committee on a meeting up with the governor. And that will be led by myself as the council president, Counsel Hanlon as former, as a former mayor, and city clerk, and of course, experienced, and Counsel DeFlorio. So, we will take your best wishes and the wishes of the city to improve the school department to the governor. So, again, congratulations, and thank you for your service. So, we have an order. Intain a motion for favorable action? Second? Okay, it is a roll call vote. It's an order. Clerk will read the roll.
Okay. Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Marchese? Counsel McGlaughlin?
No.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel, President Napolitano?
Yes.
10 yeas, 1 nay.
Okay, you've passed the order. Clerk will read the last item on the agenda, item number 18.
Item number 18. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilors Michael McGlaughlin, Fred Capone, and Richard Delasola Jr. to invite Kevin Noonan, operations manager for DPW, to the next Public Safety, Public Service Committee meeting to discuss tree work that is desperately needed and the removal of tree stumps.
Counsel Hanlon? That would be up to the sponsors. Seeing as I got no response, you know, potential many of the sponsors. He's, counsel McGlaughlin first.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion that we refer this to government, Public Safety, Public Service for the first meeting in June. I got a correspondent today, as well did Counsel Delasola and Counsel Capone, for Mr. Noonan regarding some ongoing steps that are being taken to start to fix these issues now that the spring weather is coming into play. So I'd like to give him some time to be able to work on this issue and to come back with us, to us, with the favorable report in June.
Just to echo the words of Counsel McGlaughlin. Thank you.
Thank you to my colleague. Thank you. That's okay. No, that's all right. Counsel Hanlon had asked that we amended to include the repair of sidewalks. I'm assuming after the tree stump is removed, then, yeah, I'd be more than happy to entertain it. I'd ask my cosponsors if they're okay with that, and if so, I would ask that we amend it to that effect.
Okay, there's been a motion to amend it to include sidewalks and open to remove the sidewalks. By the second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
On the motion, Mr., I really don't want to offend anybody, but why do we have to have this person up in committee when he can give us this in writing? Why can't he just give it to us in a letter and write? And why do we keep taking up people's time? I mean, I always make a phone call, and things are always done. So I understand there's a lot of tree stumps, and I understand there's a lot of problems, but why can't they give it to us in writing so we all know what's going on? As you said, unfortunately, in committee, we can't, it sounds like we can't even go to the committee. Okay, but the point I'm trying to say is a lot of things can be done in writing, and there's no reason why Mr. Noonan can't give it to us in writing. So that's, you know, that'd be my recommendation. I'm not trying to hurt anybody's feelings.
The response we got was, was it today, Counsel? Today? We got the response today. It was ongoing work, and they're going to take care of the stumps and the trees. They wait until the springtime, which, thank God, it's finally here, and the tree order does take time. So they'll grind the stumps, remove them, and the council handlers hit the sidewalks. A lot of times, the sidewalks get damaged from the trees, so that kind of a combination, what we're talking about. And the Counsel DeFlorio says, I understand what you're saying, but the people watching who called and complained about this, if we get a letter, they're not going to know if we even tried to make an effort to help them. That's just my personal opinion. I mean, if we did that, we'd have no meetings. We could resolve everything with letters and phone calls.
What I'd suggest is, let's not get bogged down on this because we've already started the process. Let's get some different events and a timetable. But I would encourage every member to only utilize, bring department heads up or members up after you've exhausted, exhaust.
It's getting late, Pete.
Sorry, that's what you get for drinking decaf. Only once you've exhausted the regular channels to get this work done. If you don't feel you're getting a response or you're getting, in a timely manner, by all means, and I'm in no means, way, shape, or form suggesting that you not put these things on the agenda. But I would just make a recommendation or suggestion. Go through the normal course of action, which in this situation seems like you are.
Okay.
But let's not get bogged down on this item.
All right, thank you.
So we have a motion to send this to Public Safety and Public Service Committee and invite Mr. Noonan, the operations manager, to give us an answer. We've already amended it to include streets. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Chairs in doubt? Roll call vote.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
This is to send it to committee, just so you know the votes, sorry. Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
No.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Marchesi?
Yes.
Counsel Matuski?
No.
Counsel McKinnon?
No.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
No.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
That would be 7 yeas, 4 nays, Mr. President.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. President. We sent that to committee. I have a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Thank you.
No second, Mr. President.
Before we adjourn, first of all, I want to thank the membership here for retaining your composure over the situation this evening. You know, it's a bad situation as it is. It could have gotten worse, and your support has made that, kept that to a peaceful situation. So thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.